I'd like to call the four o'clock work session for the order. This time I'd like to ask Mark Tafani for an update concerning our school capacity numbers and school boundaries for both the units and all the other kids.
All right, um, we had a special meeting in the Moayak area and presented some maximum capacity numbers at the school that evening. That raised some concern because it was different than the numbers that we have approved in the past and different than the planning department numbers. The numbers that we approved as a board, or you approved as a board back in the spring, those numbers were off of the K through three average class size numbers. Got those here. And so those would be the, I guess you would say the, using county terms, adequate public facilities numbers. Those are the numbers that you approved back in the spring that we presented to the planning department over the summer.
Which numbers, the yellow or the yellow?
It would be yellow. Yellows are the ones that you approved. It's that whole line, but the only ones that change are the elementaries for the K through three class sizes. Middle school and high schools don't change. When we presented the numbers at Moayak Elementary School, those are the maximums. Because every K through three class size, each individual class is allowed to go three students over, the district average. So, right now, district average in all those grade levels has to be nineteen. So that number that we produced at the special meeting, that was taken every primary class up to twenty-two, and you get that bigger number. That's well beyond adequate or typical functioning at the school, but it is something that you can look towards so you don't have to add mobile units immediately or take any other changes to things like boundary lines. The capacity numbers that you have in front of you here, this takes the actual class size numbers currently. So you've got K through three class sizes at nineteen. You don't have any actual capacity numbers at grades four and five. That's a local decision on how big those classes get. But I used, I believe, twenty-two or twenty-three on those in these numbers. And so that gets you to the number that the board discussed a week before the special meeting, which is about five eighty for Moayak Elementary School if we're using that as an example. So what I did is I stair stepped it from nineteen to twenty. Then next year, the class sizes go down to eighteen in K through three. So you lose a student per class, and so that's where you get the two thousand twenty, twenty-one numbers. And then in twenty-one, twenty-two, that's when the full state mandate goes into effect. And that's where you have different class sizes at K, one, two, and three. With the lowest being sixteen at first grade. And so when you have all those different numbers put in there, that's why you see the stair step backwards to the actual numbers that you approved in the springtime.
So you're saying we approved the yellow column in the spring, right?
Yes, all the way through.
And then when we were talking, I know we didn't want to have this at that time, but I remember more specifically that the number that I heard was five forty, or five thirty. Now, on this, it's five twenty-nine, so it's not that far off. We're talking about Moayak Elementary.
Yeah.
But, right now, we got, according to this paper, five hundred ninety-eight in roll. And we don't use the mobile trailers that were part of this, that DPI has.
Is it, should be a report?
Do we have the actual copy?
That is the one.
One of them with the pages that we signed in?
Yes, that is the report.
Okay. So, in two thousand fifteen, the study that was required by law to make this facilities needs surveyed for DPI, Department of Instruction, the study said four ninety-eight for the building. And then it increased with the four mobile trailers to five seventy-eight. That was in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, before any of the K through threes already started going into effect. So my-
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate?
He did it off of the K through three numbers. He was projecting into the future.
Where did it say that?
It's in one of those pages.
I'm just, because I never saw that before, so if that's the case, then, okay.
She's got a page in there that says, here's what's happening to the population. Right after the math page.
Okay. It says one in-
Yeah, it says one eighteen, it says one eighteen with the class size of one to twenty-one.
Yeah, but the averages are still one in twenty-one, one K through one, one in twenty-one, two, one in twenty-one, three. So those are actually larger numbers than we're using now that were required by state. And so my point is this, I understand everybody wants to pick a number. I'm just saying, we got a study that was required. An architect did it. I mean, not anybody on this board. And it said five, four ninety, it said, it said, it said four ninety-eight for the building. And right now, we have five hundred ninety-eight in that building. And we've had a K through three class size reduction. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying what it is. And now I'm looking at some of these other schools, and I'm looking at what the enrollment is, for example. I'm looking at Shawboro Elementary School, right now, today, five forty-nine. Shawboro Elementary School, when we approved this number, that's projected for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, our number was six twenty-two, okay? But, then we go back over here, and we're at six forty. Okay, so six forty, six twenty-two. We're not that far off. However, the problem is, is that some of the developments that have already been approved are already gonna cause that to rapidly change. So, rather than dealing with the situation where we're already riding at a hundred-plus capacity, I'm trying to understand where it is, where's the comfort level? I brought this up previously at joint board meetings and before being on this board, and I just don't understand, are we trying to run these schools at ninety-five, ninety-eight percent before we have a discussion? Or do we want to run the schools at eighty to eighty-five percent before we have a discussion?
I think we need to put something in place.
Do we want to drive our car so we use every drop of gasoline till we're stranded on the side of the road before we put any more in the tank? Or what exactly are we doing here?
I think we need to put something in place, you know, kind of like they did with the, I know you're gonna think, this is crazy, but they did it with the crabs, or in fisheries. It's like a traffic light thing. If you're catching this much, you're in green. When you drop to this, you're in yellow. When you drop to this, you're in red. You know, the traffic light? So I think we need to implement something where whatever number we come up with, this capacity for each school, when we get to within, I don't know, fifteen, twenty percent of that capacity, we come up with a plan. And when we get within five or ten percent, we implement that plan.
We got Jarvisburg on this DPI study, two ninety-four. And right now, we got Jarvisburg at two seventy-five. So don't think it's just happening on one end of the county. It's happening a lot. So, I just, I, look, I'm not saying I a hundred percent agree with these numbers, but these are the only numbers that anybody with any credentials brought to the table.
Can you clarify the planning department numbers versus your yellow numbers?
Yeah, the planning department numbers definitely are before the K through three class size numbers went into effect. And also, on that state plan and in our plans, we didn't raise the roof in grades four and five, or four through twelve. You know, we hung in that low twenties number because that's what the board has always said, we want to keep as close to one to twenty ratio as possible. So we kept it down in that area. These numbers over here, they could have used numbers bigger than twenty or twenty-two in the grades four through twelve, and those numbers could have impacted the capacities as well.
So Moayak Elementary, right now, with whatever numbers we look at, it's overcapacity?
Yes.
Is that the only school overcapacity?
Yes. That's, that's the school, and that's the reason for all the recent discussions, is because that school got to capacity faster than it predicted.
Not that we will, but hypothetically, if we shifted the overage to be due capacity from that school to Shawboro, guess what? Shawboro capacity. So we're running two at nearly ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. And that brings me back to my question, because that's happening at Jarvisburg right now. So that brings me back to my question. What is the amount of students the county and the public and the school system all would like to see? We have to have a common goal. It's gonna be eighty percent, it's gonna be ninety-nine percent? You know, what I mean is-
Well, I understand Jarvisburg, that you're, what you're saying about Jarvisburg, but you also need to look at Griggs Elementary School and the fact that their capacity in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two is gonna be four hundred thirteen, and right now, they're at two hundred and fifty-one students.
Plenty of seats there.
They have, with plenty of seats there. So, that's easy fix for Jarvisburg without any big issues.
Easy fix, maybe move boundaries.
I'm looking at the ADM study for Griggs of four sixty-two. I'm not seeing an easy fix. No matter where you move the ball, I'm not seeing an easy fix. What I'm seeing is four schools running at ninety-five percent plus. I'm not seeing it. I'm not following the math. I mean, anybody can show me different, please do it.
Well, and, you know, I think when she says easy fix, we can move the boundaries and adjust something.
Four, four, that is- Their schools are five, what, six, seven, eight, or five?
That's gonna be a temporary fix, though. If you look at these numbers right here on page, um-
We can add on to Shawboro and Jarvisburg.
We can. Now, that, that's a plan. But moving the line temporarily-
You can, you can add on to Jarvisburg.
Jarvisburg.
I think the plan was fully, was fully constructed out at Shawboro.
Was it?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if there was room for one or two more classrooms on each side. But I thought, maybe not.
Isn't there?
I'm sure a contractor could come up with something. But, I mean, the actual full plan was put in place at Shawboro, and a modified plan was at Jarvisburg. So Jarvisburg has the added capabilities to get it to looking exactly like Shawboro.
Isn't it four more on each wing? Four more rooms on each wing?
At Jarvisburg.
At least, at least two per wing, yeah, but two, four per wing.
Hey, when you and Matt went through the different schools, counted the classrooms, and multiplied by the number of students, what numbers were those? Those nineteen, twenty numbers?
That was the numbers that we received from DPI planning department as of two thousand eighteen, was twenty square feet per student.
Well, actually, what we did is, we, we took it, when we brought the numbers to the board in the spring, we took it to the twenty-one, twenty-two mandate. And so we took the number of classrooms and we multiplied it by seventeen, or excuse me, eighteen at kindergarten, sixteen at first grade, seventeen at second and third grade. And those are the yellow column numbers. That's what we brought to you. So, we took all those numbers as individual grade levels and said, today, we have five kindergartens at Moayak, five times eighteen, and we got the number. And then we added it all together. Those are the yellow numbers.
I also know, since I've dealt overcrowding before, that there's a capacity number, then there's a crisis capacity number. Where you can put lots of kids in by shifting different classes around within a building. And if I'm not mistaken, there's probably three full-sized classrooms that we could still grab at Moayak Elementary.
And what, what would you grab?
Well, there's a computer room in the primary that you could turn into a classroom.
And where would we put that? The computer lab?
We've got two other-
Well, that, are you talking about the one in the main building? That's being used for art now, anyway. I was there this morning.
I'm, I'm talking about providing-
Plus, there's two special ed classes that can be put into one of the rooms, and that opens up to full-sized classrooms.
What do you mean, Dr. Downey? Take two special ed classes?
Yeah, they're, they're in full-sized classrooms right now. You combine them, and you put it in, used to be a little billiard galax room.
It's in that listing where we had supplemental rooms that aren't the full-sized classroom size, so they can be used for some other services rather than having those services in full-sized classrooms.
Well, then, you also, you also have the front of the gym where art used to be.
That's, that's-
We taught there then.
I, I, I don't know that, I mean, those are not optimal teaching conditions.
No, they're not. I'm saying those are crisis capacities.
But I'm not sure of the year, but I know that there were two years when Shaw, Shawboro was the, Shawboro was being built at the time, anyway, where we had a major overcrowding situation in Moayak. And we had five trailers on the front lawn, but we had gym, we had art in the front of the gym. We had lots of things. It was a temporary situation until we could get there what needed to be done, but it, it worked.
I'd rather, I'd rather be proactive and go ahead and look at what we're dealing with now, make the necessary provisions of adequate facilities, and get the ball rolling. Instead of thinking a crisis situation, I don't want to go there. I want to be in a crisis situation. If we have the means, working with the county commissioners, and we're all on the same page, to move forward with a plan, I don't see-
Oh, that's not what I'm saying. We have that for two years, though. We have some, we have that crisis sound.
Right, but let's go ahead and-
Well, the crisis is, we're gonna have to have some trailers at Moayak Elementary until the new school gets built, okay? That's, that's, that's the answer to that crisis. And then we're, and then we're gonna have to put in addition on, real quick, fast, and in a hurry, on Shawboro.
Well, if we put ourselves on the-
And, you know, otherwise, I mean, we're talking about the, the level of quality of service.
Yeah.
And so, if we don't get out of the crisis situation, and we keep chasing every crisis, we're never gonna be to the level that I think we're aspiring to be.
Well, I think, I think Janet's idea, you know, with the traffic light, you know, little gimmicky, but I mean, we can go there. We can go there with visuals. But I mean, if you, if you did that, when we're planning for this, this new school, if we actually go out and we project out some other things based on the numbers that the county manager gave to the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, we take those numbers while we're planning for the new school, we monitor growth and see, you know, how the growth, because again, this summer, a lot different than last summer. I mean, a lot different just in twelve months. And so, if that's gonna be the new normal, then we go out there and we talk about, okay, which buildings are currently in the green, which are in the yellow, and who's approaching red? And we get those categories up there, then we can set plans in motion to avoid, you know, the, the overpopulation that we have right now.
Because there's, and we can all see, there's a lot of rooftops under construction. So we look to grow this year, definitely at the north end of the county.
Well, another piece of information, if people haven't seen the commissioners' meeting, I don't know if you guys filmed the work sessions or not. Yeah, you don't film them. There was a comment made also there by the planning department, that there are fourteen-hundred-
There's currently fourteen-hundred lots-
Fourteen-hundred lots that don't have anything on them, you know, right now. And so if some of those already approved lots start to develop, then that's on top of all the houses we do see going up. And so that's, that's also something to monitor.
And your projected number of children per rooftop, is it one point five?
The projected number of children per rooftop is point five.
Point five.
Point five, yeah.
And that, we check that number every year, and it, it's, it's an accurate number.
And it's not point five per level. It's point five of any level.
Yeah.
Free school and dark.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can, we can break it down. It's point two-five elementary students, and that holds pretty, I mean, that, we paid for a study and they came in for that.
Point five per rooftop. Fourteen-hundred potential rooftops, that's seven hundred students. And it is, right?
K-12.
So we got Central with the ADM study at two ninety-four, and currently, we got two thirty-eight in roll. We got Moayak, four ninety-nine, and we got five ninety-eight in roll. We got Shawboro with six forty, and we got five forty-nine in roll.
I know-
And, and what I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal a comment from the former county manager that he made at one of our joint meetings. The state studies, when they do those, they, they are made for a reporting purpose, and they are to inform the state that potential facilities needs are coming down the pike statewide. So I would say, and I know on the Moayak number, that those numbers are on the lower end of, of capacity. I, I've actually found in his study where he walked past some classrooms that were used for like a special ed room, and he put zero, you know, next to that classroom space. That becomes a little bit less than accurate because you could put that special ed program into a supplemental room, and then you pick up twenty kids on the capacity.
And those special ed rooms were built to be regular classrooms, because I was there when they were-
They all used to be regular classrooms, yes, at one time.
But we have to have special ed classrooms.
Yes, because you don't have to have a full-size classroom when they're only serving eight to ten kids at a time.
We have special ed classes right now functioning at even our newer buildings. They're functioning in special ed spaces that might be five to six hundred square feet, and the regular classrooms are functioning closer to seven to eight hundred square feet, or seven to nine hundred square feet. And so it's the difference between serving around twenty students in a room at a time and, and serving six to twelve students at a time in a special ed setting.
Jamie, is there a limit as to how many students can be served at a time in a special ed classroom?
Yeah, it depends on if they're standard course of study, or if they're extended content standards, and it depends on their level of need, of general skills, you can have more. But the more intensive needs, where you might require feeding assistance, toileting assistance, or behavior, you can have a lot less.
So if it is eight, up to standard course of study, a twelve, twelve, depending on if it's elementary or high school. Yes, being with the fourteen-hundred, um, lots, unapproved lots, do you know how many of those were platted year-to-go versus new platted subdivisions? If you had to guess, would you say half? Because I know on the southern end, they're platted, and they're vacant, but they have been for twenty years.
I would say, I mean, half's probably a, a good guess. The other thing that we look at is also absorption rate. So how quickly are these available lots being absorbed into the economy? And that pace has sped up. That's part of the reason why you are having the discussion that you're having, is that you've always had lots available, because a lot of lots got planted right before the recession. But now that the economy has turned, current account is absorbing more lots in a year than they ever have before.
So this chart that you have, after all this discussion, and with kudos and support for the, the planning idea that Janet came up with, I, I think that's a, a good place to go now that we've actually gotten into, you know, a concern, I would call a crisis yet, but a concern area because the population is rising quicker than we thought. These numbers here are capacity numbers that you could call your adequate public facility numbers, and we can function at these numbers at every building. With the six thirty number that we brought up at Moayak, that was a, a crisis tight number, or a once-in, a once-in-a-time number that you can do so you don't have to make snap decisions. You can make the flexibility in the building structure to make that happen as well.
But we need to go on and do something for Moayak.
What I would like to see done is to keep all those kids in Moayak, in the Moayak area. Otherwise, then we can bring in double-wide trailers, which have two full-sized classrooms in them, like we have down at the high school. And I think, I had, Matt, check, how much does one of those cost, or the lease in a year, a double-wide?
The base number was, I think, fifty-two thousand dollars for one model, and then eighty for another. I don't have the numbers with you.
The lease, the lease number's about fifteen to eighteen hundred a year, depending on if you do it for three years or six years.
Now, fifteen hundred, we, well, eighteen thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
For two classrooms somewhere.
It gets, it gets you two classrooms, and there's a, there's a code change that the classrooms have to be within so many feet of a bathroom. And so the way Moayak's main building bathrooms are set up, at least at the, the oldest part, one gender is on one end of the hallway, and the other gender is on the other. So you'd meet the, the footage of requirement. Yeah, yeah. So if you get these double wides, they now have two classrooms, two bathrooms inside of the mobile unit. And those are the ones that are between fifty-five and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And how much to lease them?
Fifteen to eighteen hundred a month, depending on the term.
That'd be about eighteen thousand, yeah.
We could do those between the gym and the main building on both ends, between the primary and the-
Primary building and the, yeah, where, where trailers have been in the past.
Because if you go to change boundaries, kids are gonna go from Moayak Elementary to possibly Shawboro. Then, once the new school's open, you have to bring them back to go to the new elementary school. So there's possibility that some of these kids are gonna be at three different elementary schools during their elementary career.
Right. And if the board remembers, we got an email from a concerned parent with that, that very concern, and it listed in there that over a six-year span of time, the student could be in three different schools, and then once they get settled in the third school, then they're ready for middle school. And so then, they got four schools before they have a sixth or seventh grade.
And that, I agree too, that's-
I agree with that a little.
But I, I do have concerns with the other, the support at Moayak Elementary, taking care of so many extra students. I mean, I know it will be tough.
They had seven hundred kids in there at one time.
But it was not good?
No, it wasn't a perfect choice. I was there, I was there. But we had an extra TA for gym, so we had some extra, you know, you're, it's gonna, you're gonna have to add some extra personnel, I think, but, you know.
Where will we get the money for this?
For?
For leasing or buying these-
You could probably pay for it out of capital outlay.
That's, yeah, they're, they're capital expenses, and so our capital outlay budget would be where we would go, that would become a priority, not to put in the capital outlay.
My commissioners have given us extra capital outlay monies each year, so.
Okay, you have a question? So you're not thinking, we need any of this this year?
I, uh- Not, not right now.
I think, I think we should do that. I think that's a fair idea, whether we buy them, I prefer to buy them, but want to lease them, because I sense that they might be needed somewhere else on another campus in the not-too-distant future after that one gets stabilized with a new school. I would say, though, that we need to be already talking, not just amongst ourselves or between boards, but we need to get some engineering work, or plans, or whatever, for the potential additions on Shawboro. We don't want to be finding ourselves in the same situation. And that's, that's my recommendation.
You know, with, with that, any, any of the planning ideas, I think, comes in a, in a separate work session type meeting. We hash out all the ideas, whether it's adding onto an existing building, or changing boundaries, or adding mobile units.
I think the first thing with Shawboro is, we need to find out if that's even a feasible situation, because I don't think it was built for that.
Right. Yeah, well, we have to see what the lot can handle, what the property can handle. So, but what the commissioners in the county planning department needs, is they need, you know, to afford the land on these stair-step numbers, and again, based on, based on walking all the buildings multiple times, and checking all the different spaces, these numbers that are on this list, we, I can recommend them heartily as a, as a very valid principle.
Are you gonna highlight there?
Well, I'm talking, no, year to year, that's where the different numbers are, they change, they, they go down. If the board, if the board wants to automatically jump to the highlighted year and say, we start all of our planning for the, even the next two years in the highlighted numbers, then that, that changes the discussion about plans and things, and how far the capacity buildings are.
We just went through the DPI study, and even though you made some points, that they might not have given credit to a special needs room the way you would like, or what happened, we also acknowledge that we're using one to twenty-one on there, the way they factor this. So really, the truth of the matter is, the numbers from two fifteen, if we're to K through three class size, almost, for the elementary schools at least, reflect the numbers in the highlighted column of two thousand twenty-two. They're very, very close. However, I will say that, not that this is, you know, the numbers for the high school from two thousand fifteen were eleven forty-four, but you got twelve hundred on this. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but I think the more crowded, the more uncomfortable. The more uncomfortable, the harder it is to concentrate, and the harder it is for support staff and professionals to adequately do their job. So, I'm not trying to change the whole game here, but I don't understand how the numbers keep going up, with how many kids you can fit in there without doing an addition or bringing out some trailers. And then we got a K through three class size mandate at the same time. I just feel like, I don't understand how the numbers grow. And then we got a K through three class size mandate at the same time, I just feel like me, I don't understand how the numbers grow from two thousand fifteen to now, I don't get it.
And, and that's, that's what I'm saying, that there were more, there were more agendas behind the D P I study than just studying the building.
I wouldn't take this as gospel.
Okay, yes ma'am, here's, here's the problem I got. We didn't like that number, we should have got somebody with the credentials to provide us another number. And if the other party, the other board didn't like those numbers in their planning department, they should have got somebody that has the credentials to provide a number. But instead, we got the numbers here, we got the numbers over here, and they had a set of numbers. We had three sets of numbers on the, on my, my goodness gracious, and we wonder why.
Matt, sure. I think what we need from you guys really, Ben said this before, we look to you for an information expert. So to your point, Will, we're not going to go hire an engineer to come in and look at it. You guys know how the school is utilized every single day, listening to you here tonight, Dr. Doughty makes some good points. So what we really need at the board level, board commissioner level is for you guys to set a par number based on what, you know, and it sounds like you're there for the most part so that we can move forward. The two boards have already come together, we've already exploring, you know, finding a new school location. So on the outside looking in, it just seems like at this point, you guys have to figure out how to make it work until we, to gap it basically now. And probably trailer is going to be the easiest thing, so.
So the question of the board is, do you want to stair step the capacities or do you just want to go with the twenty-one, twenty-two number? You know, and, and again, decisions will, at the county level and at the school level, will be impacted by either decision. So.
Well, some of your Shawboro capacities are going to change when you open a new elementary school in Moayac because you're going to have to have kids, you build it for seven hundred, you know, you may have, just right now, Moayac maybe three hundred, three hundred and fifty kids that you can put in there. So you've got to go somewhere else to grab some more students, probably be down in Shawboro.
Well, that, right, that's what you're talking about. You're talking about you've got roughly seven hundred, or excuse me, twelve hundred kids between Shawboro and Moayac right now.
What's going to happen with Central?
Well, Central can be used, you know, with some, you know, as a buffer to Shawboro if needed. But again, once the new school gets built, you've got whatever the number of kids, let's say it's thirteen hundred kids. Now you're dividing it by three schools instead of two, and so all the populations go down some five hundred. And if you're building a new school for seven hundred, now you've got five hundred kids in a seven hundred building. Shawboro's a six hundred plus building, you'll have less than five hundred kids there. And then Moayac will drop below, you know, five hundred and get actually into the, any capacity that we've had on any of the capacity studies.
Just, yeah, like how many fun rooms do you currently have?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And what time does lunch start and end, when the first class goes in and the last class goes in?
We were very, we knew this was coming, so we've been very agreed with the schedule the past couple of years. So actually lunch goes the same time they did last year, eleven to one.
Eleven to one.
Actually, yeah, twelve to five, you're right.
Well, here's, here's the proposal. Why don't we just grab this set of numbers in the middle? We don't have to take ones from twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. We don't have to take the ones from twenty nineteen, twenty, we can take the twenty twenty-one numbers, that's down the middle.
Use that for two years and then when twenty-one, twenty-two kicks in as mandates, use that?
And it's really not that far off from either direction, so it's not an extreme. And then the only other item I'd like to address is that twelve hundred on the high school. I'm not real comfortable with that, but outside of that, I, I, I can reach in and help.
Another thing to consider, and Dr. Manning chimed in here, Ms. Doughty, another thing to consider at the high school. We've got a lot of different learning environments going on at the high school. So we've got students that are either at the Ratsy or over in Elizabeth City for part of their day or their whole day. And so even if we have twelve hundred students on the rolls.
Enrolled, they're not.
They're not all at the campus at the same time.
What would you say as an average for on the campus, an average like? Not put you on the spot or anything.
My best conjecture would be maybe a factor of point eight. When you, when you consider the partial days and stuff responding to the fact that.
So a lot of them leave and never see lunch, a lot of, right.
It's been a lot of, a lot of hot schedules.
And I think, I think that twelve hundred number came from the fact that you have teacher work areas and most of the rooms are only used three out of the four periods a day.
So they could be used. We paid a price for having a teacher keep their own room because we're not efficiency, because you're planning in your classroom, whereas you can have them rotate. You got a little twenty-five percent efficiency.
You could have twelve hundred kids.
Yes.
I just don't know if we need to, if we go with twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, it's like we really are in a crisis situation very quickly, you know?
That's reality.
But if we look at twenty nineteen, twenty, it's not.
Okay, so, so we got a crisis right now, but it's not so bad if we choose that. But next year we're going to be in a crisis anyway, so why not just face the music and just go ahead and just start attacking the problem?
Well, it sounded like we're.
Kidding ourselves?
We're making the problem relate us to all this.
Totally Roma. We're talking about. I mean, that number's a hypo, that number is a, is a number of, this number of total students is what we're looking at. And we know, we've admitted that we're going to have to have mobile classrooms at, at Moayac. But if we can do that and avoid boundary changes until we get that school and then do it all at one time, it just makes more sense to not disrupt children as much as possible.
Right, and these numbers, these numbers again, they're taking the same number of students in every room, in particular grade levels. Students don't show up that way.
No.
They, they, they don't show up where you're going to be at the maximum or the average, you know, every single time.
This year.
So right now, at Moayac, you guys have about, what, twenty-four, twenty-five at your upper, upper grades? Twenty-six, okay, so, so they're, yeah, so they're up a lot higher, so that, that reflects the capacity right there. We don't want to say all of our fifth grades are going to have twenty-six, we don't want to say that. But again, for one year, you know, if it's that high, then that capacity number goes up and you're not in the crisis area.
That year, that, that year before we opened, J P now as an early, as an elementary school, I had twenty-nine every day in fourth grade.
So where, where is the board one away?
Where, do you want to go ahead and decide what we're going to do with the projections?
Well, in four years when we open a new school, like I said, Shawboro, some of that boundary is going to go to Moayac. Some of Central can go to Shawboro, you know, it's like a stepping stone there. So that's going to change the capacities.
Of all three of the schools.
Well, I make a motion, we select the twenty twenty-one capacity chart, which we're going to be at next year anyways.
We can't, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I like to see because we're going to be there next year anyways, we're already in the division. So it's like, we're going to be planning, we're going to have to look ahead, so let's lose it in the next year.
Yeah, we can modify, modify for.
Yeah.
And then vote tonight, so we can start getting to see what we want to do and then we'll talk about it tonight, gentlemen, okay? Do you want to talk about the greenhouse?
Okay. My name got put on the greenhouse.
I requested that this be put on because I know our committee's been discussing this. I've not heard anything from the committee about what the status of this new greenhouse is.
So I will hand it off to Don Monroe and Matt Mullins who have facilitated that committee's work and then they can say where the greenhouses is at right now.
Thank you, Mr. Fudd. Yes, we did have a committee that was developing the greenhouse, we met three times to date. We basically looked at the type of greenhouse, the location, we've looked at the flooring, the same compliance with the A D A. Our last meeting, we came to a consensus that the location of the greenhouse would be behind where the current greenhouse is sitting, where the two trailers are for the football, junior, junior high football, the junior high football. We looked at an alternate site at the high school campus, we found main gas lines in that particular spot that would need to be moved at approximately thirty-five to forty thousand dollars for removal and replacement of those lines. So that was one of the pullbacks to put the greenhouse at the high school location. The flooring issue, we had looked at full gravel or partial gravel and some concrete, full concrete. We kind of decided, we decided that the way to look at that piece is the way most people do it, according to the manufacturer Atlas. They pour walkways and where the tables are set against gravel underneath those for drainage. And that solves the drainage issue for that. So we've covered a consensus as a group, that location, we're behind the, the existing greenhouse floor, partial concrete. And I guess that's where we are at to date. Mr. Mullins has put in a.
Right, right now, the contract has been signed by Atlas, it was placed in the hands of the board for signature. I've called utilities to mark the area so I can find out what's going on back there and make sure what I'm going to have to move and what I'm not going to be able to move. And the next step is get a P O created and get the engineering drawings started as soon as possible and start finding out what I can do with the, the middle school football locker room and equipment stores trailers, whether or not I can relocate, relocate them slightly on the property or that's going to be, there's going to be too much involved with that. I don't think there will be, but that's the next step, is to check into relocating and to find out where I can place them to get them out of the way of the greenhouse and still meet the needs of those.
Now, if we would have gotten a commercial industry standard greenhouse, we could have put it at the site of the present greenhouse and not had to go through all the permitting, right?
I think that new building would still need permitting.
Now, that's not my question, not my point. You know, Mr. Craddock and I talked with the board at one time about getting one of these commercial grade greenhouses like you see when you drive down Interstate sixty-four going to Raleigh. You know, those would have been, you know, much less.
Yeah.
One issue I found out from, from the teachers as they looked at that, there are three stages to plant growing. One was the initial from the seedling, that takes the heat, all that sort of thing. There's intermediate stage, once the plants get to a certain level. And then what they call the cool house, which is once the plants are at a different level, they're put in there to maintain their, to maintain their strength. I, from the research I did on commercial greenhouses, that's maybe why you see so many in a line. Each greenhouse has its own function, function. So with this greenhouse, it's occasion all three functions take place in the same building.
I just wanted to share with you, and I'm not saying it's going to be necessarily a problem, but for the A D A, A D M compliance on the walkway, going from the field, the track area, there's a transition that on the walkway, I think, is going to possibly need work. And then when you leave that walkway and go, like right now, it's going to need to be through a little bit of gravel in between the two dumpsters. There's possibly a transition that I just wanted to point out because we didn't discuss that. But as I was leaving, that was likely to potentially, depends on how hard the inspector is, need to be addressed.
What, you mentioned something about sending the plans to get approval from the state. What are you waiting on before you can do that? What do you need then?
The actual engineered, engineered drawings. So I needed, I needed a signed contract from the company and they wanted to review our contract. And then I needed the contract to go to the board, Ms. Edrich. And once I get the P O in place, I can send the, the company, the go ahead to draw the engineering drawings and take a draft off of our P O to send me the proper stamped drawings for what we decided, so I can send those to the state.
So you're just waiting on something signed by Ms. Edrich?
Well, we, we, we just got it to her because they held on to the contract.
Right, I understand.
But.
You're uplifting again.
It's all her fault.
That's what you need from Atlas, right?
Atlas, Atlas is waiting on the go ahead, the P O number, and that will take long after our contract's signed.
How much are we talking about for this greenhouse?
The greenhouse is eighty-one thousand dollars roughly.
The greenhouse itself's fifty-three, two.
Installation.
Installation, installation, twenty-four thousand, shipping fifteen, sixty-three, and tax about thirty-five, ninety-one.
Well, I couldn't have that on my head.
Eighty-one.
Eighty thousand, eighty thousand.
And on the other processes, I only have two electricians and they have to maintain schools. So I'm going to try to get an electrical contractor to run the service to the greenhouse. I mean, I've got a guy that's supposed to meet me on Friday, was supposed to meet me last Friday, but neither one of us wanted to go out in the hurricane.
Oh, God, I'm glad.
And a plumber that's going to, I'm going to talk to about running the water and the gas over. And it's kind of going to be a ballpark until I get the actual engineering drawings in my hand.
Who's our engineer?
I've contacted Atlas for a possible construction date. We're scheduled to be in for mid-January at this point unless there's a cancellation and they can get us in earlier than.
What were you saying?
Who is our engineer?
It's, it's Atlas's engineer.
They're the engineer.
They have the engineer, they, they will engineer the drawings for our area to pass our credits.
I know this is part of the whole horticultural program. Is that a small component or large component of it?
Large.
It's a large component of it, I brought in some numbers for student requests for this year. All told with Ag Apps, work one, work two, one hundred and twenty students requested those courses, that will be the greenhouse related courses.
And the number of kids that actually work in a commercial industry standard greenhouse when they graduate, would you say one or zero?
Well, that, that number is small since that industry requires a few people working inside the greenhouse itself.
Okay, you don't need to explain.
From that, there's lots, lots of opportunity out there for students.
They don't, they don't quite bid, which you wouldn't do working in this greenhouse.
So you think that's a, a pretty good projection date is mid-January for the second semester? Do you think that would be?
Their, their plan is two to three weeks depending on weather for construction of the building itself.
And if everything moves along and they have a cancellation, then maybe we'll get moved out.
Santa Claus.
Ma'am, when you talk about running utilities out there, are we going to be able to, I know we're sliding a little bit to the east, that's east to northeast.
I'm hoping.
Can we run it off of the same building?
I'm hoping that we can make some modifications and the service that's going to the building that's existing is a hundred amp service already. That greenhouse needs a hundred amp service, so I'm hoping that they can just set a junction box on the side of that building and make the hundred amp service for the new building. And then run a smaller service for the house that's already there because it will only need lights and receptacles. But if they can't, then we can, we'll just have to run a new service. But I mean, that, that's going to be a longer run and a lot more copper, a lot more of them. But the gas and the water should be the problem, it's, it's right there at the pump house, it should be able to just be extended over.
That's what I'm at, yeah, yeah.
We've got a, we've got a pump house right there on the old one. If this is close enough to that, we can just run all the services right to the next one's spot.
Okay, thank you for the, any other questions?
Quick question, on the latest, going back to A, did we skip over school boundaries or was that ever discussed?
Do you have anything else to add? We've touched on it, but do you have?
Yeah, well, we touched on the parts where we said the, the parent raised the concern about the students going over here and then coming back and, you know, being in several buildings. The school boundary piece is, is part of that general discussion. So if you would say in the next couple of years, the plan for Moayac, you know, if possible, would be to utilize mobile units to keep all the students there. Then we would look at like general discussions of boundaries as part of that planning process.
Would we want to do that in another meeting, like basically, I think there are some already approved lots and nothing that's been built. That we could possibly put into another district so when they use our building in the next year, that, that would help.
That's what I'm saying, they call this the work session, but when I'm talking about another special work session, it would actually be rolling up our Steve, crunching numbers and those, and doing that kind of planning. It'd be that kind of a work meeting.
That's what that was.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, how about policy seventy-one hundred, do you want to go with that with us?
Yep, very quickly, here is the entire policy seventy-one hundred. Most of the policy, like five and a half pages out of six, is the actual existing policy that we have. But there was a suggestion to look at a recent Garrett County. there was a suggestion to, um, look at a recent Dare County, um, hiring, um, policy edition, and we gave that information to our, our board attorneys, and inside of one section, basically one paragraph, page four, page five, going back in red, they believe that they've covered, uh, what that new policy in Dare County accomplished, and that would be to, you know, have informational packets, uh, every time there's a hiring recommendation. If you look at the end of the first line into the beginning of the second line, there's an area that's highlighted, and that goes to the note off to the side. The Dare County, uh, policy that went into effect was for every certified position in the district. Uh, if the board wants to do that, you have the potential of thirty-five to forty-five, um, processes per year, if you want to do that. He gave an out here where he said if you wanted to look at administrative positions primarily, then you could, uh, do this process for just the administrative positions, and that would take you down to, um, a lot fewer, um, informational package to create for the board, totally board's decision, but he put the option in there, in, in the highlighted area.
I think more information is better, for every teacher and every assistant.
It just puts a lot of, it just puts a lot of work on the HR department.
I would say just administrative.
That's what I think, I think we need that, every teacher and every.
Because we could have, we could have five to six processes going on simultaneously.
Yeah, I think it should be, um, the administrative position.
And again, this, this whole thing, we got first reading, which we didn't even declare, this is the first reading, first reading, second reading, and then approval, so, um, you know, you can think about, you know, what your thoughts are, and you can bring the ideas up between now and the next meeting, and we could, we can make the revision.
Okay. Update on recess schedule, Dr. Matt Lees.
All right, um, so we looked at all the elementary schools and recess varied between fifteen and twenty minutes, um, per school building. Uh, the reason why those times are where they're at is that we need compliance with state law regarding minutes in classroom instruction, and so, the, we are flexible with our time, and so we recognize that kids also get time during the day to move about, they can move about in the classrooms, um, but on, for our, our principals report it fifteen to twenty minutes, um, per time, but when you run the minutes and you go through the hours, we're required to have one thousand twenty-five hours of instructional time for the year, and so that's where that fixed recess time comes from. If you increase it, you go below, we, we get into the instructional hours component.
So, have they had days and stuff?
I, I understand, I understand all that, but I also understand the value of recess. And the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends sixty minutes a day of vigorous physical activity, of which recess can be a part of it. Um, and since our last meeting, I read an article in Virginia college, where Virginia D has just increased their recess time for kindergarten from twenty minutes a day to forty, and grades one through three from twenty to thirty, so.
And did, and did they say anything in that article that they changed the, the length of the school day?
They did not, they did not say that.
Down here, I don't, I don't know what they have in Virginia, but actually in North Carolina, K through twelve, they tell you what counts as an instructional minute and what doesn't. Uh, and at the secondary level, every time the bell rings and they're changing classes, you've got to subtract those minutes off of instructional time, in my opinion, you've got to get to the class in order to be instructed, so I would take the travel time to count, but it doesn't, uh, and, and I wasn't part of that law, so it gets subtracted off, and so we've got to look at bell schedules to make sure we subtract all those minutes, that we still get to the thousand twenty-five. Most schools I've been, sorry, I interrupted my stuff, most schools I've been in, I've seen teachers doing the, I call it desk side yoga, like the brain breaks or whatever, but they're doing exercises with a, a, a video or a program on the, the smart board, and, and I mean, I've seen that in all grade levels, at least K to five.
But they stay within a confined space, they're not able to move all around the world?
Sure, sure, but it's still, it's in addition to, like, they don't say, hey, we're getting recess today, so we're not doing any brain breaks, I think they're doing the brain breaks and they're still getting recess.
And that is, that is better than not doing it.
Sure, sure.
I agree, but I do think, I mean, and I have several articles for you to read, so I can share with you.
Matt, when I became principal Shawboro and I had to do, I questioned why there was only fifteen minutes on there, because I was used to my kids having thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Or twenty-five, or some flex time.
Sure.
But we're required to report, and that's, that's binding, now that, does that mean that we are out there with a stopwatch? No, that, that is kind of the common.
Don't most of our kids get PE a couple times a week?
They do.
Are they embedded in those numbers for recess?
Well, if you.
No, but they're doing physical activity.
No, but with that, with that, there is a report that we have to give to the state, and it's called a physical activity report, and so PE, recess, and even the brain breaks, um, they get added in there, and every school has to sign that students get an opportunity for this many minutes, uh, average, per day, and so that's where that fits in.
If you get two PEs a week, that's a hundred minutes if they're fifty minutes, and if you get fifteen minutes of recess a day, that's seventy-five.
Yeah.
So, that's a hundred and seventy-five minutes, whereas, you know, they're, the American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending three hundred minutes a week, so we're, we're short quite a bit, but.
If only our, our, um, DPI and our.
Now, the state does recommend, what do they recommend? I looked at it, but I didn't write it down, the state requires something.
They do, they require, um, you know what, I need, I'm, so.
I'm sure we're meeting the requirements of them, but it's not just the requirements, it's what's good for our kids, so thank you, Dr. Lees.
It makes you feel better, Dorisburg has two twenty minutes for kindergarten. Why? It makes you feel better, Dorisburg has two twenty minutes for kindergarten.
For recess.
Very good, Dorisburg.
So, again. Mark, to your point about counting the time in between classes, for that matter, they could count the time, and when they pick up one of us, my helmet will be up there.
Yeah.
I didn't tell, but you can.
One time.
One time.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'd like to close the work session, thank you.